We are going to take up item 6.8, 10 a.m. consideration of the final report of the Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee and Mr. Rothstein and Ms. Cicato is coming up. And Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
That's okay. Do you want to sit here?
No, you're good.
And more members in Zoom.
Yeah, we have other board members joining us via Zoom. We have Chair Cromwell and Georgina Marie Gordotto. I believe she's in the library.
After Georgina's.
I'm actually, I'm at my home library. Good morning, everyone. I will be starting us off. My name is Georgina Marie Gordotto. I'm the former poet laureate of Lake County for 2020 to 2024 and the literacy programs coordinator for the Lake County Library. I also served on the Community Visioning Forum, and we wanted to open this presentation with a poem by Joy Harjo, who is the former National Poet Laureate of the United States. This is just a small excerpt from her poem Conflict Resolution for Holy Beings. Recognize whose lands these are on which we stand. Ask the deer, turtle, and the crane. Make sure the spirits of these lands are respected and treated with goodwill. The land is a being who remembers everything. You will have to answer to your children and their children and theirs. The red shimmer of remembering will compel you up the night to walk the perimeter of truth for understanding. As I brushed my hair over the hotel sink to get ready, I heard, "By listening, we will understand who we are in this holy realm of words. Do not parade, pleased with yourself. You must speak in the language of justice."
Thank you, Georgina, for sharing those words and good morning supervisors. I'm Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. 2020 was a year of change for every American. The COVID-19 pandemic rocked many long-held assumptions and the way we interact. The untimely and tragic deaths of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd were cultural flashpoints that brought a renewed sense of urgency surrounding the policies and conduct of every public-facing organization. Inspired by a June 2020 sermon from a Kelseyville faith leader, Lovisse Lewis, a self-organized Lake County group called "A Community Call to Action: A Loving Response to Systemic Racism in America," grappled with what could be done here at the local level, including encouragement of action by the County of Lake and other government organizations. On February 23, 2021, your board collectively resolved to host public forums to discover community priorities in the following categories: meaningful actions and activities that will build bridges where there may be walls, fostering tolerance, respect, understanding, equity, and inclusion; promoting nonviolence and nonviolent conflict resolution; focusing resources on underlying causes and conditions that lead to inequitable resource and justice distribution; and relevant solutions for any social injustices as they may come to light. The Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee was created to host those forums, and today's presentation and the final report attached to your board's agenda document that work and our work products of the Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee. The committee is grateful to all who joined and engaged in discussion at these events. There are a broad diversity of perspectives among Lake County residents, and all voices were welcomed and invited. Committee members acknowledge, for numerous reasons, not every perspective was shared in the 2023 public forums. This report documents perspectives that were shared via the Honoring All Voices Forum series. This morning's presentation will include recommendations of potential next steps to continue this work, including gathering of further information. Community-focused recommendations will be presented by Dolores Farrell on behalf of the committee. Information on the Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee's purpose and journey and participants will be shared by Chairman Benaya Kim Cromwell of Robinson Rancheria, who is here via Zoom this morning. And background on the community forums themselves will be provided by Joanne Cicato, a valued contributor to both the Community Call to Action Group and this committee. And now I'm pleased to introduce Chairman Cromwell, again appearing via Zoom.
So we need to go, we need to advance slides.
Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate that. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Honored to be, honored to speak on behalf of the Lake County Community Vision Forum Planning Committee. I apologize, we didn't have an acronym for it, but we tried really hard. So I think the Board of Supervisors, not just for today and this opportunity to share our report, but thank you for your vision and your leadership during that time that Matthew spoke about. Post-2020, there was a lot of divisions in our community, in our state, in our nation. But the Board of Supervisors wanted to go forward with proclamation that included tolerance, respect, equity, as well as inclusion. And so I want to say thank you, and this is our report today, for that purpose. The purpose was those words that we used in the proclamation. Those were the beacon lights to say meaningful action, fostering tolerance, promoting nonviolence, focusing resources.
Chair Cromwell, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We need to increase the volume, if possible, to make sure that we can hear them clearly.
Sure. How about that? Did that help?
I apologize. I'm looking and speaking to Sam Houston to see if he can help.
Yeah, I was just trying to increase my iPad, see if that helped.
But that's better right there. Perfect. I apologize for the interruption.
Okay. I just wanted to say that those words in that proclamation were the beacon that we followed, and that was our purpose as a, as a forum planning committee. The journey itself was a committee coming together with different backgrounds and ages and life experiences and educational experiences and where we're at in our, in our journeys today. But I wanted to say that journey was, was, was created because of community members that cared, that community members that sacrificed hours after work, sacrificed hours before work, met on Zoom when they could, and, and put things on hold so that they could be a part of this. So there's so much apart, not only the purpose, but the journey. And again, thank you for the commitment that you showed in trusting this process, in trusting our committee, and then providing those resources needed. And we're happy to be here to report it. But I wanted to share that this committee does show the best of our community that are here for the future betterment and healing of our, of our community, so in a brighter future for all of us. So thank you for that, taking that time, that leadership, and that patience needed. Appreciate it. Yep.
Thank you.
These are just some of the participants. Yeah, sorry, the slides were just some of the committee members by name and, and the participants. So, so thank you to all of them. If we could just keep that up for a few more seconds. Those who helped create this over time and, and again, in an era of division. And we came together to work together and, and just glad that we could be here. And so thank you to all the staff for the county, all the consultants that helped, and we'll talk about them here, and all the community members that came out and were participants. So thank you for that.
All right, let's see. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So in the committee's early stages, we decided it would be most beneficial to use an outside consultant because we know it's difficult to see the water we're swimming in here. And we really wanted to take a look with fresh eyes at what was happening here in Lake County. We received enthusiastic commitment to participate in the committee and the forums from both the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, and they also offered a financial commitment to engaging with a consultant. So the committee gathered and assessed proposals and ultimately engaged with Nicole Anderson and Associates, who unfortunately couldn't join us today. But Nicole and Dr. Shelley had gone far beyond and above their contracted duties to help the committee. We're grateful for their facilitation of our group process, for the education on the broader issues of inclusion, fairness, and respect, and as well as working to facilitate a safe space in order to maximize participation and authentic engagement in our forums, and really for helping us get to this moment where we can come to the board today. Excellent. Thank you. So we held three forums over a period of two months, beginning in April of 2023. Our intention was to diversify our geographic presence while engaging with technology to maximize our reach. Our first forum was held right here in the Board of Supervisors chambers, and it's where we had the broadest reach experienced with the forums. Our second, our second forum was generously hosted by Chairman Cromwell and the Robinson Rancheria Pomo Indians of California. We were treated to a full dinner, and in that space, powerful family stories were told, and an impressive quality of conversations arose. The third forum was at the city of Clear Lake in the council chambers there, where we heard some very poignant experiences from community members, including one local leader, who shared deeply honest experiences about their personal journey of reflection and unpacking how different their experiences had been to others in their community, and humbly acknowledging the challenges that others faced. We reflected in our planning meetings that the willingness to do that in front of others, to feel safe enough, was actually notable and speaks to how this board here, through its proclamation, empowered this opportunity for awakening. I think we're supposed to go back to, I'm sorry, we got a little mixed up. If we could go back to the Clear Lake, the, the Lakeport, this one here, yeah. So our total in-person attendance was around 75, and yet our technology allowed us to reach even more. So this is statistics from the first forum, which was the most successful in generating reach beyond those that attended in person. What we learned is that when we offered the forums with technology, the reach could be significantly broader, as you can see, as you can see here. All the forums are available to view on the county's website and also their Facebook page and the YouTube channel. Now we can go to next one. So the committee had landed on four questions to pose to participants, and then after all the forums were complete, we synthesized those into themes. And I'm just going to share the themes that were revealed. It's all in the report that we submitted to the board. Under the first question, how do you define respect, fairness, and inclusion? Basically, people want to feel welcomed. They want to feel heard, and they want to feel valued despite any differences. And I think if we took an assessment of who was in the room today, I'm pretty sure that most everybody would feel the same about that. We want to feel welcomed, heard, and valued despite our differences. With the second question of what gets in the way of you and your family getting your needs met, no new information here. It's a matter of lack of services and resources, healthcare resources, behavioral health resources, and housing. When it came to what history must be acknowledged to begin community healing, specifically historical trauma that included the actions of Andrew Kelsey and Charles Stone, and also other instances, were brought to our attention, and the felt, the feeling was that they, these stories, these histories need to be heard and held in compassion to be healed. And then finally, what would support all of our Lake County residents feeling respected, included, and experiencing fair outcomes were continued listening sessions, education, outreach, translation services so more could participate, and diversified leadership. There were a few more themes that were revealed through our process itself, and not necessarily arose from within the forums, but throughout the life of the committee. One of those overarching themes was about safety. We know that we can only learn what we learned from those that were in the rooms. We could learn about their experiences because they were able to get into the rooms, but we also know that public forums, video recording, and broadcasting live can create some real barriers to participation. So we knew that we weren't hearing the full story, and we knew it had to do with safety. We actually learned in private conversations that safety is a big concern, and it's not just about historical, it's about present day. And I have to say, it was deeply disheartening to learn about present-day behaviors and actions that are being directed towards some of our community members. It was actually kind of astonishing and sad. So if we are able to focus on promoting healing broadly, creating a community vibe where everyone feels safe in all spaces, then what we learned is that there's a lot more work to be done. And this moves us into the committee's recommendations, and for that, I'll go ahead and hand it off to Dolores Farrell. Thank you.
Which mic should I be speaking into?
Matthews.
Or do I just speak loudly? So my recommendations, have we already addressed the internal ones? That's going to be you after me. Okay, the recommendations that I'm going to just go over are the external ones, the community-focused ones, the ones that we as community members ourselves maybe can do something about. So this talks about Board of Supervisors to decide whether to convene an ongoing ad hoc committee. Are we going to do this again? That would engage topics and community partners to address diversity, equity, and inclusion issues in Lake County, or work to create a community-led coalition. Are we going to have these meetings again? That would be a question that we're going to pose to our Board of Supervisors as the community. Will we create and maintain pages on the county's and the city's websites, raising awareness of diversity, equity, and inclusion work, including resources? Will we continue holding community forums and other engagement opportunities, such as small groups, community walks, or one-on-one sessions that capture the experiences and perceptions of historically and currently marginalized community members and reveal specific community member needs? Will we continue to do that? Will we develop and conduct a survey that provides anonymous space for marginalized voices to be heard? Sometimes folks have to be anonymous so they can speak their truth. Will we work to deconstruct implicit bias and a new narrative around diversity, equity, and inclusion work through awareness campaigns? Will we leverage community partnerships, including local advocacy groups, service agency, and ombudsman to advance diversity, equity, inclusion efforts across the county? Will we engage with an indigenous data framework for additional quantitative data gathering? That's a whole lot of sentence. That's a whole lot of sentence. And all it means is, will we come together recognizing that, I'm going to read this over here, where that came from? Came from a lady named Abigail Echo Hawk. This woman happens to be native. I am not native, but it certainly resonates with me. She says, at the end of her article, she's a research analyst in this, for the City of Seattle Indian Health Board. The last part of her article says, "I know who I'm descended from, and I know their stories, and they survived so I could thrive. So I'm not going to continue that legacy that I am so blessed to follow in the footsteps of the unconscious and the stories that they whispered in languages that we weren't supposed to speak anymore." That's Black folks, too. Of cultural practices that they attempted to outlaw. The grandmas whispered them ear to ear, generation to generation, so that I could practice them today, so I could have that dream. That's what indigenous research is. That's continuity. That's continuity. Tomorrow is Juneteenth. Be in Middletown at 5 o'clock tomorrow. That's continuity.
Thank you, Dolores. And in partnership with our consultants, the committee also made internally focused recommendations for the consideration of your board and the city councils, which include the following: create an office of equity and/or engage an equity officer; provide ongoing staff diversity, equity, and inclusion training and professional development; develop an internal committee or employee resource, resource group made up of representatives from each department. And with the note that those could, that group of people could be responsible to ensure alignment of the work across departments. Develop an anonymous reporting system that includes a timely and effective response process. Recruit, hire, and retain staff that represent the diversity of Lake County. Hold and engage and/or engage in joint elected official study sessions to educate at the level of policy, systems, and power, and include, invite the school boards, tribal nations, et cetera, where appropriate and feasible. Ensure representation of marginalized community members on all appointed advisory bodies, and as was stated with the community-focused recommendations, engage with an indigenous data framework when possible for collection of additional qualitative data. Georgina?
Thank you, Matthew. So we also wanted to close with a poem to round this presentation out. This is another poem by Joy Harjo, again, our National Poet Laureate, prior to Ada Limone, and she is native. This is the poem, "This Morning I Pray For My Enemies." And whom do I call my enemy? An enemy must be worthy of engagement. I turn in the direction of the sun and keep walking. It's the heart that asks the question, not the furious mind. The heart is the smaller cousin of the sun. It sees and knows everything. It hears the gnashing even if, as it hears the blessing. The door to the mind should only open from the heart. An enemy who gets in risks the danger of becoming a friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgina. The Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee is grateful to your board and the Clear Lake and Lakeport City Councils for your commitments to fund forum facilitation, and the engagement of residents in the work undertaken thus far demonstrates community interest and a need for ongoing efforts and collaboration to promote the safety, well-being, and success of all Lake County residents. This completes the committee's report, and your board's consideration is very much appreciated.
Well, I want to thank the board, the committee, for the work that you put together. I know that I got to experience one of those forums. Great conversations, heartfelt conversations, deep conversations, and I think that putting our guards down and actually getting to know individuals is the best way to get rid of discrimination and the way that we have our implicit biases. Until we get to know one another, we just, we just don't know. And I think that it's very special to crumble the walls and, and get to know each other in our communities, and we do have quite diversity within our communities. So appreciate the time spent, appreciate, I do want to highlight, Nicole Anderson, I think, did a fabulous job of organizing and leading the conversations during these forums. I couldn't speak highly enough of her and what she did during those times. I do want to mention that we also received some public comments, and I just want to make sure and highlight that some of the concerns from the public comments that we received was based on a summary of the themes and the public comments and input received during the forums, and that these are not within the recommendations themselves in which both Dolores and Matthew spoke of just currently. And so at this moment in time, it's to look how we move forward with the recommendations that are in front of us, and I want to open that conversation up for the board.
Oh, no. It wasn't there.
Okay. So, yeah, I've been the longest, you know, board member that was present at these meetings. I know that Tina Scott was initially appointed with me, and so in doing so, you know, these discussions were a very good, safe space for people to come and be a part of. I'd also like to note, there were still a lot of folks that still didn't feel comfortable enough to come in this setting, and that holds true with a lot of different things, even proclamations that we do. I've invited a lot of people for one we did earlier today that still didn't feel comfortable enough to come because of a lot of the discussions and things that have happened in the county. So just wanted to highlight that this is what we're hoping to get to, is the small steps of getting people together in the same room, talking about these different things, and it did happen in these meetings. It was great to see that, and just appreciated everyone being a part of it, opening up and giving this opportunity for each other to come together and, you know, make community division into community discussions.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I got subbed in after Supervisor Scott left. I found it humbling and empowering, and not all at the same time. It's quite a journey, and started off feeling safe, and as the forums went on, I got progressively less safer because I was like questioning my own experiences and my own life journey and trying to contextualize it with new perspectives that were being shared by some members of the public and by some other members of the Visioning Committee. But at the end of the day, it was such a fantastic journey of self-inspection and introspection that encouraged me to not only use my active listening skills, which I struggle with on a good day, but to actually listen to issues that are not even a thing in my universe, or at least not in my life's journey, if I had to deal with, for example, disproportionate enforcement. You know, we did talk in the committees about law enforcement, whether we needed to bring some policies forward, and you don't actually see that in these final recommendations because as we did the work, it's like definitely it's, can be an issue in some communities, but it did not rise to the, the top of the heap in our, in our local process. You know, it's quite a weighty list of recommendations. There is some choices this board can and hopefully will make, some focused internally, some focused externally. I just, I just found it fascinating. I'm glad there is a record of it. You know, I did ask that we include the link to the YouTube playlist that is on the county YouTube channel, and apparently also on our Facebook feeds. If you're wondering what we're all talking about up here in terms of DEI and why we're waxing poetic about it, you can go back and roll the tape. You can literally go back and hear about the issues we were talking and about the various recommendations and how they took shape. So it's not, we did not do this in a black box. We did this in a very transparent and open way, and to the point, there are some comments that have been made about receiving information about concerns about past traumas. We need to hear those, that information, but it is not a drill-down recommendation as presented here today. So, thank you.
Supervisor Pisca?
Can we pull the recommendations back up?
Yes. Internal or external?
So as two supervisors that attended these talked about the experience, I am looking at the list of recommendations, and there's quite a lot here. And I'm just wondering if there's any more examples or thoughts on how we might implement some of these, because it's pretty broad, and it would be a really big discussion for us to, to drill down on that today. So I think there's probably some more conversations that need to happen on how we figure out which paths to follow. I'm just asking either of you or the members to kind of speak on that.
Yeah, this may be something for an ongoing committee to begin looking at. Start from the recommendations and then moving forward for those deeper conversations of how and/or which ones that you would like to, to proceed with. of how and/or which ones that you would like to proceed with.
Well, I think Joanne said it well. This is, this is, this is the start of a conversation. Yes, there are many potential options. And, you know, having more conversation about that would be fruitful. So we definitely appreciate all of the work so far, and we'll look forward to continuing that conversation. And certainly with the direction of your board, we're happy to look into any of these to the extent that you would like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Supervisor Simon?
No, appreciate the work that's been done by the committee and everyone that's came through. You know, obviously, the recommendations, we got a lot more work to do. Rick Mayo said it perfectly earlier in that proclamation. There's a lot more work and conversations that need to happen. Even when we look internally here at some of the county policies and other things, I know we've come a long ways, but there's still more work that needs to be done. If we just look at the overall diversity of our, you know, our employees here in the county. So there's a lot of work to be done. I know we're making steps forward, but I appreciate the recommendations today. And this is said informational only and direction. So it's interesting how we're going to do both those today. But, you know, I appreciate the work. And like I said, there's just more work to be done. I was proud when we voted on this to get it started and to go through it. And giving people a safe place to really understand who they're living with is really important. Really is important. And it's not just happening here in Lake County. It's happening all over the state. You have the Truth and Healing Council and some other councils that have been put together by the governor. And we'll continue those conversations as we're moving forward. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, there are some recommendations that hopefully we can follow up with continuing this, whether it's an ad hoc committee or something to that effect. But obviously, thank you very much for the work done.
I just wanted to add one more thing. I, I found another thing to be very positive was I know initially, because of where the proclamation came from and the timeframe in regards to George Floyd, it was very hesitant for law enforcement at the time to be a part of it because of the defund the police and things like that. And one of the things we wanted to make sure was that, you know, this wouldn't be a place to, to basically attack law enforcement. It was to talk about it. And fortunately, Chief Rasmussen, actually Supervisor-elect Rasmussen, and Lieutenant Stobie, and now Chief Stobie, were a part of it. And they, they played a big role in helping us and, and having these discussions. And it was really good to see that. And I just wanted to highlight that it was good to have them there.
Thank you for that.
Can I clarify something?
Please.
I said that maybe having an ad hoc committee, but that was one of the questions that was left for the board to decide. Does the board want to house the work moving forward through an ad hoc committee? And then convening the various partners that are important, the stakeholders? Or does the board want to be part of maybe a community, community-organized entity that may not have the same restrictions that the ad hoc committee has? So, but then the, the board, you know, would have a representation there. The county would have a representation at that entity. So that was one of the questions that we had in the report to determine.
And I think there's been a comment leading towards maybe not continuing with the exact same ad hoc committee because I don't know if they were, all those members were members of the committee. That's quite a large committee. But maybe dwindling those numbers to a manageable amount that can look at these external and internal recommendations and really hash them out and, and bring out something that's a little bit more substantial than just a one-sentence comment of what it would do. And then bring those back to the board of supervisors for consideration. Something along those lines.
I have one comment about this. It would appear that some of these items that are directed internally don't need committee work, I would think. For example, this item that says, "Provide ongoing staff DEI training and professional development." Now, I don't know what county staff training schedule is. I don't know the items that they're currently scheduled to include in their annual training or whatever. But I don't think that that item needs, needs an ad hoc committee to study that. I think that's something that county whoever can look at and say, what are, what are our requirements for staff currently? We're identifying that there's some additional training related to DEI needed. Let's put that in the schedule. And then you guys can actually tell us, okay, here's our current training schedule. This is what's included. So I don't think we need committees to discuss that. That's an internal thing that you can look at, your own employee requirements or where they are with that now. But obviously, to the general public, we're saying that if we think county employees need some more training, you may come back and say, yeah, we're going to add that. You know, we don't need to discuss this again. Or we already have that in place, and we'll just follow up on it. So there are some items on here. I don't think we have to convene a committee to really discuss.
And I appreciate that. And I think that staff would probably cross off the things that we are already doing. I know that we have started the DEI. I don't know if it's annual or if it's every two years. I know we just did it this past year. But that's been put into place. And I think crossing off the things that we have done, I know I've had a lot of conversations about this with different groups. And to be honest, I don't know anybody who has successfully taken a look at DEI and, and changed the outcome. And I think we need to have purposeful action of saying, who constantly seems to be at the bottom and does not get the access, does not get the voice, does not get the support? And what can we change to change those numbers? Typically, we know, but we don't take a look at what actions have we taken and what have those actions changed? And I think that's what the ad hoc committee would be for, is to provide those actions or recommendations of actions. And then being able to track to make sure that change is happening. And if not, then bringing it back to the board's attention and saying, this isn't working or you're not implementing this the right way or something along those lines. Because I really feel like we could talk all day long. And I think we all agree that everyone needs to be treated appropriately. We need to be welcoming and offer a safe space. We are a public service entity. But we have yet to make the major change that changes those numbers in, in the outcomes. And I think that, for example, our health metrics, we were just talking about that. And so I, I think that's what I would need the ad hoc, to be able to really have that focus to help us continue to pay attention and give us the information that we need to have. Just because there's so many other things happening, it's nice when you can have one group that's focused on just that to make it a little easier to gain that information and also insight from others that are doing the work outside of Lake County. Be able to learn from them. So that, that's just me speaking. Again, I would like to see the ad hoc continue and take a look at those things. And obviously, what we're already doing would be crossed off the list.
A new ad hoc, though. You said you're finished.
Well, no, I'm just saying that, that the purpose of this ad hoc committee is culminating in this moment right now.
Our job is done.
Our job is done. And how you proceed, or if you proceed with another ongoing committee that's board-directed, then that you decide what that would be moving forward. But our, our work is done today.
And I would agree to that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment after what Joanne's comment was about whether it's ad hoc or a community-based committee that the board, you know, would send a couple of members or something like that to be a part of. But I think that, since you mentioned that, I just want to comment. You know, I think, I said ad hoc committee, so it really got to go on. Those are the words came out of my mouth. So, but when you mentioned, you know, the community-based committee, I think that's more important because I think that could be more powerful where just the board is committing or a couple of the board members are committing to go to those meetings and to understand. I really just take it from an example of the power coming from the community is, is more important than from elected officials or anybody else. These are the folks that are living together, just trying to survive and understand who their community, who their tribe, who their village is. So really understanding that. And I just, I'll take an example of two committees I have in my district. I have the Math, Middletown Area Town Hall Advisory Committee of the Board. Then I have the Lower Lake Action Committee Group, who's not a county group. And they have the same voice through the district supervisor, at least while I'm sitting here, to bring stuff to the board, affect their community, and work that hard. And they don't have all the restraints. They have their own, they have their meeting place. They work with the county to have that done. So I think there's, there's value there. Really learned that there is value there because Brown Act and all these other things and all these restrictions, you know, that the advisory committees have, the Lower Lake Action Committee doesn't have. They, they do a good job of engaging the community. So I want to show the value that goes both ways. And you mentioned something, so I just want to talk. I don't know what it looks like, but I think a community-based committee that each year the board would just appoint, you know, a couple of members to go to, I think moving forward would be a good conversation to have. I don't know what it looks like. But prime example is advisory committee or Lower Lake Action Committee Group. And they have the same voice, sometimes I think even a little more powerful because they don't feel like they're elected officials trying to do this stuff. They're just community members that really care about what happens at the park or at their streets or what's going on. So I want to, I want to give value to that. Get government out of it.
Ooh. But the, but the county may be willing or it may be a desire to add resources to be able to have that happen. Because these forums didn't happen without cost, as you well know. So, you know, if the county wants to be a partner in that and maybe can offer resources to help that happen, all the better.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, Supervisor Simon, yeah. Organizational lift, whether it's the county or community group, there's, there's, there's work involved. And it's hard to sustain that. You do need funding and you need the vision to form, whatever that group's going to be. And then you need leaders to actually drive that work from meeting to meeting. Continuum of Care stands out as a community-driven organization, but it's taken years for us to grow that into something that's functional. Now we have a memorandum of understanding, and it is supported indirectly. But it's a heavy lift. So I just want to point out that an ongoing ad hoc committee is an oxymoron. So we could do an ad hoc for some specific issues that are time-limited in scope. Or we could have a standing committee or community group that would take a longer-term look at just DEI issues generally. To your point, though, I'm not aware of any local organization that is immediately in a position to step up and provide that. So I think just by default, the, the county would be the more logical choice initially to stand up and ad hoc if needed, even if the longer-term vision was to bootstrap a more community-led coalition. And at the risk of incurring the wrath of some letter writers, I do want to be responsive to the comments of people who said, oh, don't you dare use this visioning report and try to take a position on the Kelseyville name change. If I were to look at the recommendations that are not that granular, the greatest need, I think, to continue to solicit public input on this issue. Because right now, the county is in kind of a passive position on that. One of the letter writers said, you should be seeking the opinion of all community members on this particular issue. And I happen to agree with that. So we have not had opportunity, and I want to make sure I stay on the agenda item. But the most urgent thing I see, and I'm also citing back to the 2021 Enabling Resolution where this was passed, the creation of this, is we're supposed to, as a board, look for relevant solutions for any social injustices as they may come to light. Well, clearly, the injustices that have happened in the early history of Kelseyville have come to light in no uncertain terms. Further, we're supposed to take meaningful actions and activities that will build bridges where there may be walls. And where, where I see that conversation right now is a bunch of walls, not a lot of dialogue. And one reason I mention that is I found such power in the visioning forums. And it did take money, and it did take a consultant. But having that structured dialogue in a place where everyone is guaranteed their safety or at least made cognizant that we're supposed to speak respectfully in those forums, that's the kind of dialogue, and that's the kind of venue, and that's the kind of format, I think, could potentially not make everyone happy on the name change issue. I don't think that's possible. But could certainly move the needle to a point of greater understanding. And I think this county can and probably should commit resources to that if this board would agree with that and if the people in the audience have some input on that. That's the most immediate need that I can see. The county stuff, the internal stuff, DEI, I think between the Labor Department and all that, federal and state laws, we're, we're going to be driving the DEI bus on the county side for quite a while from various sources. But in terms of providing useful opportunities for public engagement on a divisive issue, I think an ad hoc committee supported with something similar to what Nicole did with our visioning forum could be a very powerful tool of healing, even if it doesn't come to any ultimate resolution. It gives us a platform to have more structured discussions about that particular issue.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm going to start in the Zoom room. Sally Peterson.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm Aminah Hehoney Sally Kalakut. I'm an enrolled member at Middletown Rancheria, and I also work for Big Valley Rancheria. I had the honor of serving on this committee. Put in a lot of time and energy, we all did. So I'm happy to see it come to a fruitful ending. And I do appreciate a lot of the discussion from the honorable board. And I do want to just make a couple of comments. The reason that I was so passionate and wanted to participate in this forum, in this committee, was I raised two multiracial sons in this county. I've lived here for almost 25 years and, and witnessed firsthand the inequities, I guess I would say, that my sons endured, living in this county. So, you know, I, it was important to do this work because I saw the need. I am very hopeful that change will happen. And, and change is happening slowly, but it is happening. And I will comment on, in Middletown, our, our Middletown Art Center is actually going to be painting the water towers using PomO basket designs. And, and that was a huge accomplishment towards DEI efforts. And, and very proud that that's happening in our Middletown community. I did want to thank Matthew for his guidance. And a lot of times, he was herding cats when we were trying to put together meetings. So I wanted to give a special shout out to him So I wanted to give a special shout out to him and also our consultants that helped us through this process and all of the community members that participated and attended our meetings. It, it was quite an experience and I'm glad that I, I was able to do that. I wanted to thank Supervisor Sabatier for his comments. And I think coming from this, we just want to make sure that, that the comments and all of the intentions and creating, whether it's an ad hoc committee or, or anything that comes from this meeting, that it's meaningful and that it's just not talk, that things change and things happen and everyone sees the need for it. And, and I, and I feel our board of supervisors feel, see that as well and feel that. So I wanted to thank you all for your time. And just to mention also, you know, there's a lot of large companies, a lot of other governments that actually create departments and DEI coordinators. And that might be something to think about as well when you're thinking about how to move forward from, from this. So thank you very much for your time, Kawika.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Fred Breones.
Hello, hi Fred Breones, Big Valley Rancheria, Band of Pommo Indians Tribal Member, Basket Weaver and Healer. I'm sorry, I didn't, thank you for this meeting first and foremost, thank you to all the work. I didn't come to the meeting because I'm afraid, really, like many people are in that room, afraid of who, white supremacy that will retaliate. So I don't come to the meetings. To show you beauty, I'm all the way here in Hawaii. I hope you could see my screen photo where our tribe has the petro glyph all the way here in Hawaii, where again, it's just beauty. And in our area of Lake County, where we've been there for over 10,000 years, that area was called Lilik and that is my family. And Kamut on Buckingham, that is our family that's been there for 20,000 years. And the story happened one time, I'll tell you to me that when I was up in Upper Lake riding my motorcycles one day, there was two white kids that tried to stab me with the screwdrivers. And lucky thing, my white grandfather Buddy Davis, he picked up a two by four and he hit one of them right over the face, broke his nose.
Can I redirect you to, if I can redirect you to talk about the report and the recommendations, please?
Well, I'm trying to get into that, don't interrupt me, please. So now, see, there's this fear now. So that area, Lilik there, that was our home. Now then Kelsey came and do you see how now there's this division where it's hard to live with us? They never known how to live with us and seen a business world that I have a business and to have any type of racist remark or racist review, now it's white, especially white supremacy, it's being frowned upon. And, you know, a real world example where our tribe owns many businesses and we even own that Lake County Tribal Health. And somebody was recently removed because of their racist remarks, their racist views. And see now going to you board here, now there's a reporter in the room that they're watching and they're going to write a story and they're going to see how you vote. And now it really tests not the Indians, but the white people. Which type of white are you? Are you the one with the blonde hair and the blue eyes that heals like Jesus? Or are you the white devil like Kelsey Stone Lyons, Rudy Davis that murdered?
Mr. Breones, I need you to focus on the-
This opportunity to be able to speak my voice-
Mr. Breones?
Because we're always being cut off like this from able to speak-
But you're not speaking on the agenda.
The trauma, the generational trauma. So I support the name change and to end white supremacy.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a-
Community forum conversation.
Little difficult. I have no further hands up in Zoom and we are going to open it up for the public in the chamber, please. And I, I do want to apologize to everybody, we are way behind schedule, but I want to make sure and hear everybody. So those who are waiting for an item afterwards, I'm apologizing to you. People came here specifically for this item and I do not want to restrict their speech. So please hang with us and also please note that for item 6.9, those of you who came here for that item, I also apologize, but we are going to be pulling that item and moving it to August 6th. So just to give you a heads up, so you're not waiting around for something that's not going to happen and I deeply apologize for those abrupt changes. We're going to continue with public comment, please come on up to the microphone. Thank you for your patience. And if we can make sure to stay on the topic of the report and the recommendations in the report.
Hi, my name is Lorna Sides and I live in the town that I like to call Connocti. And I'm the proponent of the name change from Kelseyville to Connocti. I want to commend the Lake County Community Vision, Visioning Forum for looking past any personal interests they may have and in keeping the name, in keeping, in keeping the name and, and for acknowledging and supporting the healing of our local people, indigenous, from the intergenerational trauma they have been living for over 150 years. I also want to thank the committee for acknowledging the importance of renaming Kelseyville to help Lake County residents feel respected and included for all Lake County residents. I would like to thank, thank the Board of Supervisors of Lake County for adopting the goal of promoting tolerance, respect, equity and inclusion in our county. The USBGN, the United States Board on Geographic Names, and many Lake County citizens have repeatedly requested opinions from the Lake County Board of Supervisors regarding the name change.
I, I, I want to make sure again that we're not discussing a whole different topic. The topic is the recommendations and-
Okay.
Please don't do a very wide circle to get to the point of the topic at hand.
Okay. So, but I, I would say I, I am requesting at this point as the BGN and many of the citizens have for the county to chime in on the name change, write a personal letter, write a, you know, get together as a group and write a letter, however that's done, and at least give recommendations or say that you're not going to do a recommendation, at least get some word into the BGN on how you feel about the name change. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
And thank you for, thank you Michael for acknowledging how important this is and how it needs to be addressed countywide and take people's feelings into consideration. Thank you.
Rachel White, Kelseyville. I was just wondering if you could bring up page 14 of what was published in the agenda and make a distinction between that document and what was presented today and how we are to differentiate that, between what is specifically stated as to support the efforts to rename Kelseyville.
If we can go ahead and put up page 14?
Matthew, I have a comment.
And did you have a comment, Mr. Rothstein?
I'm happy to clarify that if that's helpful.
If you'd like, I, I think I can make the clarification as well. Page 14, as far as I'm concerned, is a summary of comments that were heard and discussed during the forum. Just like we've heard some things today from the public, those comments will not disappear. They will be in the public record. And this was a summary of a report of those forums, not a summary of the recommendations of what the board is looking to take action on. And so the question that was asked during the forums were, how do you define respect? What gets in the way of you and your family getting your needs met in Lake County? What history must be acknowledged to begin community healing? And what would support Lake County residents feeling respected? And all of those questions were asked in each one of the forums, which engaged discussion in the small groups that we all broke out into. I know I was part of a, I think, four or five person group when I was in the city of Clear Lake. And those were some of the themes and responses that were provided and hence a part of the summary of the report. And again, just to clarify, not within the last pages, if you can scroll down. Nope, keep going to the, right there, we have recommendations. And if you keep scrolling down, you'll see the internal and the external recommendations, which we've already read out loud individually. And not detailed within those recommendations.
Is it possible to get a breakdown of the demographics and the representation that was present in all the meetings from Kelseyville specifically?
I don't think we tracked that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we don't have that-
We didn't track-
-data. We have, for, for a lack of better data, there are videos where you can make assumptions, I guess, as to the demographics, but you will never know the exact demographics. And it's just that we didn't track that data. We didn't ask any personal information of individuals within the forums. We came in, we introduced ourselves, but there was no request for age, sex, gender, ethnicity, race, or anything like that. Next public comment, who wishes to speak on this item? Please come on up.
I think the young man who spoke had some true feelings and I think he was shut down. And those true feelings are what needs to be solved instead of ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. We need to stay on topic, we're already way behind time. And that's the reason we have an agenda and we write out exactly what will be discussed because it is actually illegal for us to get involved in a discussion that is not on our agenda.
Thank you Bruno.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green, I want to thank you for, for what you said. I think that's exactly what's, needs to happen. Unfortunately, through this process and this report, you know, Kelseyville wasn't approached or discussed about that issue, but you talked about humbling. This whole process has been very humbling. Bruno and EJ both talked about, you know, letting their guards down and getting to know our communities. I've been to some different places that I thought I would never go to and I was welcome there. Spoke to a couple of supervisors there and really felt, felt welcome. So there's nothing in this report other than the, you know, the recommendation, you know, support efforts to rename Kelseyville, you know? And the supervisors, you know, we want it out of there. Listening to Bruno, it's probably not going to happen, it's probably not going to get removed.
And just to clarify, it's not a recommendation. It's just a comment made by somebody that was recorded and reported within the final report. Please continue.
Yep, and I just want you to know, I mean, from our, our Save the Name group is a small group. There's voices from both sides, you know, the gentleman that spoke earlier, you know, I guess probably described me to a T, you know? But when I look back to my community and the people that know me, they don't, that's not who I am. And, and man, this is tough. And that's all the more reason for what you guys are doing here. So I support all this, I'm getting to learn about it, I'm getting to know about it. Sort of new to me, you know, we've been trying to have conversations, we've been reaching out to tribal leaders, supervisors. But back to what Mr. Green said, you know, if you need people to talk to, you need to community moke, power from the community. Your RKBA is just like the Lower Lake group, you know, we're not governed by anybody. I don't know if anybody was at Bacon Fest Sunday, but, you know, 50 volunteers and thousands of people walking through our friendly country town and, and that's really who we are, our Save the Name group, that's the people we are. And we're here to help bridges and walls, as I've read that 10 times a day. And the bridges need some work, but we are open to conversation. There's some great people here that know Kelseyville and we're all ears and we're here for you guys. So there's, there's, there's these far outsider things that get said. You know, I've seen my name, the logo of my business plastered on things, it's not super comfortable, but, you know, I'm a big boy, I can get through that. But we're trying to shut those outsides out and really focus on respect, forgiveness, healing. And we're trying to learn that too and somehow I hope we can get there, I really do. So anyways, that's what I had to say. My name's Mark.
Mark.
Borgesani, Kelseyville resident, long time.
And I think you speak to something that's really important and was part of the forums is one of the greatest things and scariest things in life is to make yourself vulnerable and, and to let your guard down and try something new, go into a different place. And I think that's where we actually learned the most, greatest opportunities. I'm going to continue with public comment if that's okay? Is it specifically related to the comments or?
It was just basically that the, that the forums were meant as a starting point. They weren't meant to be comprehensive for touching base with everybody in Lake County. It was a starting point, so hopefully that helps.
Thank you, please.
Alan Fletcher. I thank the Visioning Committee and the wonderful work they did. And I do hope it continues one from another. Respect to Supervisor Green's suggestion that the hot issue would best be done by a county-controlled group, I think is wise. Do not open the floodgates, you'll have 7,000 people in orange shirts rushing in. So structure it, have the groups make reports and comments and have a sensible discussion. So I endorse your efforts and I did in my written submission and comment, requested you send this report to the BGN ATO. Without comment if need be, just that you received it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, next.
I've shrunk. Good morning, my name is Marilyn Holden Reed, I live in Kelseyville. This is an important day, this is all a big deal. I have been aware of the Community Visioning Forum Committee for some time and I have read your report and I respect, I've heard your stories. I hope you hear ours. I'm a bit puzzled as one of the tenants of this committee is inclusiveness. And yet there is not a member from Kelseyville that's on this committee. To my knowledge, no one from Kelsey was invited to sit at this table. Since we are in Kelseyville and since Kelseyville has not been represented, I take umbrage that there is a recommendation on page 14 that says, let's support the change of Kelseyville. Inclusiveness. Maybe somebody from Kelseyville was invited to sit at your table, but I wasn't aware of it. I was, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do you want to repeat one more time that that was not a recommendation? That was a comment from a public member who was not censored to say what they wanted to say, just like we, granted I tried to interrupt one speaker, but wasn't trying to censor and trying to lead him back in one direction. Ms. Farrell? If you can speak in the microphone, please, I'm so sorry.
I just want to make one comment for real clarity. Page 14 of this report is a recap of what was said at community meetings. That's page 14. Page 18 are the recommendations that the committee is giving to the Board of Supervisors today. On page 18, the word Kelseyville is not there. There is no recommendation from this committee that talks about, specifically about Kelseyville. On page 14, the word Kelseyville came up in community discussion. And it's only a recap of what was said by the community at that particular point in time. So I think there was a confusion in what was said on page 14 out in the communities and what this body is presenting to the Board of Supervisors. That's on page 18. So there was a little, I think there's a little bit confusion about that. 14 is the general public at our forums. Page 18 is the recommendations to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you Ms. Dolores, Ms. Farrell. Yes, please.
Elaine Brown, I don't know if this is on?
It'll be on.
Elaine Brown, just community person, educator. You know, just speaking to the Kelseyville thing very briefly, I've dealt with two historical things, that name changes that happened in my life. One was the Paul Paul Theater, which is a theater in Fresno County, the fair, that they tried to change the name. I happened to work for that immigrant family from Armenia. And it, it does something viscerally to you, as you can see in this room. Also Yosemite, Curry Village was all changed, okay, but, you know, they just changed all the names in Yosemite.
I'm going to interrupt for a second. It's either you like the recommendations that are on there or you don't like the recommendations or what changes would you like to make to the recommendations? We're not getting into the conversation of what is happening outside of this topic in the name change of Kelseyville that is out there.
So did the other people-
This is about whether it's a recommendation or not. Currently it is not a recommendation.
So the other people got to speak on Kelseyville.
And I'm trying to get this conversation to be a little bit more streamlined-
I will be streamlined.
Because nobody seems to be listening.
All right, I'll streamline it fast. When you name change a historical place, you deal with people's emotions and sometimes there's reverse discrimination, which I've witnessed in life. And we need to be very careful, as you see in this room, with people's emotions, thank you.
So it sounds like you have no issues with the current recommendations, which that's not in it. Please, who's next?
May I speak on Zoom?
Please, Georgina.
Yeah, I just wanted to say with great re-
Yeah, I just wanted to say with great respect to everyone who's speaking, the Community Visioning Forum was countywide. It wasn't just specific to Lakeport or specific to a certain geographical area. So when these forums were promoted for the public to attend, it was countywide. We did our best to promote that via press releases, social media, emails, newsletter, outreach, you know. We can't always reach everyone in Lake County, but I just wanted to respond to that comment that Kelseyville residents were not invited because this was a countywide effort. I also just want to say the Kelseyville name change, of course, it's an important matter. It's very contentious, but I don't want that to take away from the work of the Community Visioning Forums. There were so many things that we covered, and diversity, inclusion, and, sorry, DEI in general. It's beyond just the name change. The name change is very important. We want to respect our native peoples, but I just implore the public to also keep a wider open mind that there are a lot of topics within diversity and diversity concerns in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Verge Blanger, and, you know, I noticed somewhat collective emotion when it was mentioned about white supremacy, and this is directly as far as a concern, I think, on the name change. I don't use those terms.
Sir, sir, recommendations.
Yes, I recommend a name change, and the reasons is because we're having a change in demographics. It's been going on steadily, and not only is it offensive, it's sort of like in a family with the child molester, the family throws that person out.
Sir.
So I'm recommending that the name.
You're asking for it to be in the recommendations.
Yes, I'm asking the name change to be in the recommendation.
We're going to leave it at that.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to have to really be restrictive on, there's no changing anybody's mind right now that currently it's not in the recommendations. We're talking about the report and the recommendations. If you want to talk about something else, that is not the place to talk about it. If you want us not to put it in the recommendations, by all means, step up there and let us know you don't want us to put it in the recommendations. If you want to, you can step up and do that too, but we're not going to talk about the topic itself. That is not what's on our agenda. I really feel like this is being utilized as a way to discuss something that this was not meant to discuss.
Hi, I'm Barbara Green, Kelseyville resident, and I'm just concerned that this report will make its way to the BGN. And that's exactly what they had in mind when that was put into the comments. I understand it's not a recommendation. I understand page 14 is just comments, but the fact that it is in this report and it's going to be sent to the BGN who is making the decision is not okay.
So I don't know where that comes from.
It will get, it will make its way to them. This report was paid for by the county, that's our tax dollars, and it's not fair that this is in this report, and it will definitely make its way to the BGN. There's just no doubt about it. I know you may not be sending it yourselves personally, but someone will. And I just, I feel like that's wrong.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Appreciate all the work you've done. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mary Morse, Kelseyville Plains, Kelseyville, and a resident for 36 years. Yes, this will be about Kelseyville, but a little different angle. We know that you, five supervisors, are going to be asked where you stand. They want your opinion from your district, and that's fine. None of us have a problem with that. The problem I personally have with it is we are not being asked by our supervisor. We've been told neutral, and I know you're going to try to dismiss this.
Recommendation or not.
So my recommendation is that the five supervisors come and meet with Kelseyville residents only and talk to us and get our opinions very respectfully. We respect everything you guys have to go through. There's a lot of work. I have worked with our local natives for years in our business, never had an issue. It's always been so respectful on both sides, and I have greatly appreciated that. What I do ask is for you to meet with, because we are the only ones that will be affected by the name change. That's why it's very important to each of us. Everything in this study is important, that it all has its place. But for us, the big thing is Kelseyville, we are a very poor community, lot of elderly, they have to change everything. I don't have to tell you guys, you know that. When you change a name of a town, your driver's license, everything. Again, I'll get back.
Your recommendation.
So my recommendation is that the five of you, please, I invite you to come to Kelseyville, meet with Kelseyville residents only, and I say that because there's people coming from all over that don't live in Kelseyville, and they won't be affected.
Thank you for putting it in a recommendation.
Thank you for listening.
Any other comments? I need you to go to the microphone. No, but nobody can hear you on the TV or the internet.
Okay, not everyone will hear me. My name is Frances. I live in that village of Kelseyville, and the reason I came here is to speak about peace. I didn't know why I came here today, but I didn't know all this agenda was going to happen today. But it's, I would love to see more happen with what you have presented today through your forum.
That sounds like a recommendation.
Well, I would, and there's probably things to check off, and there's things to make more important, but I would like to see the peace of it come together in how we speak with each other, how we want to know each other, how we represent whenever we're walking down the street. So back to that proclamation in 2012, which was 12 years ago, which was, I don't know if we were all on the same terms. Were you all here 12 years ago?
None of us.
I was here for that.
Yeah, I was too. And so, and the year before that. So these things were signed into place with an attitude to pass it on, to create something for everyone, businesses, all us folks, the lake, the air. So learning to actively listen is very important, and not to throw stones, not to hurt anyone, be mindful of what we're doing. But the summer of peace meant a lot to me, and I'm not just an old hippie.
So again, your recommendation is to go back to that.
I would love to see more happen with this declaration or whatever you're calling it. So thank you, and thank you for paying for it because we needed it.
Thank you.
Yes, we did.
Any other comments? I see no more comments and no more hands in Zoom. I want to highlight one comment that was made, and for a reason or another, there was nobody representing Kelseyville in this, but I know that, I think that's one recommendation that I would like to look at, is ensuring that there's diversity, both geographical and racial/ethnic diversity within our committees that we create. I know I brought it up before about our committees being maybe too centralized in one area versus others, but I think that it's important to get different voices and different perspectives because different communities have different experiences and therefore bring a different perspective on working towards making things better here in Lake County. And so that's something that I know I've been trying to do. I've been asking, and we've gotten some great information from HR with giving us more of our diversity information, but I know that's something that I will continue to work for, and that's something that I would like to add to the list of recommendations if my colleagues agree with that addition.
It's on there though, isn't it? It is, it's on as a recommendation.
Oh, well, look at that.
Yeah.
Ma'Baye.
What exactly do you mean? What's on there?
It says.
To invite everyone, or are we specifying a group?
I mean, I say, I see here ensure representation of marginalized community members on all appointed advisory bodies, but to me, it's not just marginalized community members. We want all, as much potential geographic and different perspectives. And I don't think it means anything of the opposite in what it's saying, but I think that's the portion that I'm being told it's already on there. But I know it's important that we don't miss out on representing District 5 or representing District 3 or any other district, and that we try our best, try to be as diverse as possible when we're creating our committees. And right now, we don't really get a, I know I asked for it and looking into it, but we don't get a report of who's on the committee as we're adding more people to the committee, and are we not creating more diversity? Are we actually really just making it one, one group, one demographic, and one geographical location? And I think we need to, we can do better, and I think we're trying to do better as well. So the fact that it's there, it may not be worded exactly the same, but I think it means the same thing. Yes.
Can I, I just want to kind of reflect back of the purposes of these forums were to listen to the voices that usually are, have been oppressed over time and have not had an opportunity to be held and heard in public forums because of that overarching, that overarching theme that came around safety. There were people that didn't even feel, again, were willing to meet with us in private. So I think one of the things about making sure that there is a diversity of representation on those committees moving forward, that was an internal recommendation, correct, for the county, for the committees?
It is on the internal.
Was to make sure that the voices that have been oppressed over time are being elevated to the equal, if, sometimes even more, because we live in a culture that has not, that has not listened to those voices, and we've made decisions that have gotten us to this moment by not listening to those voices. So making sure that those voices are elevated and heard, if not at equal representation, but even more, to do some correction to what has happened in our, in our culture.
And I appreciate your comment, and I think, I agree with the sentiment, but I want to make sure that our committees are a reflection of our community and everyone given the same opportunity to be safe in order to speak and have their voices heard. And I think that that's what we need to work towards, is ensuring that we create the safest of places for everybody to be vulnerable, because that's what people fear, is that creating a vulnerable moment of speaking truth and not being heard in the positive way.
My apologies, I just need to make one clarifying comment just to reorient, that the recommendations are the recommendations of the committee at this stage. What's before you are the recommendations of the committee? And so what your board chooses to do in taking those and coming to your own decisions are distinct from what the recommendations of the committee are as written in the report. So just wanted to draw that distinction.
And I know that we had talked about not continuing the committee because your work is done, but creating a new committee and looking at focusing on ensuring to stay the course towards ensuring that we lift those that have historically been on the bottom, and ensuring that everyone around Lake County has the same opportunities throughout, because that's not the case at this moment in time.
Thank you.
Are you guys in agreement? Supervisor Green, did you have any further comments? By the way, I closed public comment just to make sure. Did you have any further comments?
Well, on the internal stuff, we already tried to ensure representation for different community groups and demographics. Doesn't mean that, there's always interest in serving on that. When somebody does get appointed to an advisory body, they generally land in Brown Act land, and you get in a fairly structured speaking mode of people up here and people out there. So it's a dialogue of sorts, but what I've been learning through the visioning forums is that's not comfortable for everybody. Some people take a little time to process their own thoughts. Some people do get scared when they're speaking in public, and you need to buy time for people to get their own truth out, but also allow time for those active listening skills to apply when other people are speaking. But that's what I found most powerful about the visioning forum. So to, and I appreciate the difficulty of your task, Chair Sabatier, in trying to keep people on the agenda subject, but a lot of people here did want to talk about the name change. I think there is a recommendation in here that we could consider acting upon, and that would be convene an ad hoc committee that would engage on that specific issue and hopefully bring back a recommendation to this board about whether to take a position with Board of Geographic names. To Georgina's point, it is not by any means the only DEI issue facing Lake County residents, but it is by far the most prominent and the one that keeps filling up my inbox, so I have to keep emptying out my inbox when my server crashes. The power of those visioning forums, and I wish more people had been there. They were, they were noticed publicly, so if there weren't a lot of Kelseyville people there, guess what? There weren't a lot of Lakeport people there either, you know? So, but through repetition, we can get the input that we need, you know? I remember Kelseyville High when they dedicated the mural, it was beautiful for the people that were there. There were a lot of Kelseyville people who weren't there. So I don't want to take prior opportunities and say, well, that's all the visioning we're going to do today, thanks. Here we have a very specific issue that would be appropriate to a time-limited, purpose-limited ad hoc committee that would engage with community partners on a specific DEI issue. And maybe from that effort, maybe it would help spin up a community-led coalition that would take on that work of healing, not just in Kelseyville, but the county as a whole. So I do think, even though the comments here were not necessarily supportive of the idea or with, submitted within the framework of our external community-focused recommendation, but that would be my request. In the absence of any other movement or any other process, which I have not been informed of, you know, would this board support similar to like we did with the visioning forums, creating a budget, creating a process, doing an RFP if we have to, to help the community engage in productive dialogue on this subject as opposed to the walls and the destructive dialogue that's going on right now?
So for me, that would take precedence over the things that were listed that we were really looking into from the beginning. I mean, for me, that shouldn't just be pushed to the top when we're talking about things that we haven't been doing, and it's not even about that. We're talking about these other things that are focused, recommended for training, for education, you know, talking about this representation in all communities. It says that in here, so I don't know where all of these other statements are coming from. It says all appointed advisory communities, all folks. It's always been an open invitation despite, you know, who came. I just, I want to stick to, I mean, that's fine. I mean, if you want to do that, we can look at that too, but my, my focus would be on these internally focused recommendations, and someone said something, I, I don't know if we're still taking public comment or?
No, we closed public comment.
All right, so I would like to focus on these internally focused recommendations that we have been given and see what we can do about those. If we want to talk about what Supervisor Green is talking about and other folks are talking about, that's fine too, but are we going to ensure that we recruit, hire, and retain BIPOC staff? Are we going to put together an actual internal committee and add folks that we designate from the community at large to be a part of this? I know we at one time in these discussions of these visioning forums talked about having a group to ensure that they are looking at the policy that's put in place, just like we have other policy-driven ad hoc groups or whatever you want to call them in place to look and see if it fits that bill, if that makes any sense. So I just want to make sure we, I think that's what we were put together to do, is look at those, create these recommendations and put them to fruition so that we can actually address those issues.
And I appreciate that comment, and I think it fits right into my belief as well that we need to start with ourselves and make those internal changes before we ever go into the external and start asking others to make those changes. We have to prove that we can do those things too. And we can do it simultaneously. And we can do it simultaneously, but we have to also make sure that we're looking at ourselves. I don't know that, I don't know that I want to just give a blanket of we're gonna do what's on the recommendations versus bring back a strategy, bring back a measurable, what are we measuring to make sure that we're seeing the changes occur? Because right now, I'd be asking staff to move with a recommendation without, with asking them to do all of the work that doesn't necessarily, do they know exactly what we're asking for and what's in the? I think we have broad statements of ideas of what to do, and I think the ad hoc committee can refine those statements and come back with a very specific strategy on how to go about each one of those recommendations. And then afterwards, we can ask staff to go ahead and take those on. Supervisor Pesci?
That was my question at the very end of the presentation, is here we have this long list of recommendations. It's very broad. We need to figure out a strategy. We need to figure out the priorities that are there that we want to move forward with. So my question is, how do we get to that? Is this something that we form an internal ad hoc committee to work on? Is this something that we, we can't really, I mean, we can ask staff to do this, but it feels like there needs to be the participation of the supervisors that worked on the, on the recommendations, because you were on the committee.
Right, yeah.
And this is the most important. This has been going on since 2021, so I don't want to lose sight of this work. And I'm deeply grateful for all of you who committed a great amount of time to work on this. So is it an ad hoc committee that is assigned to bring this back? An internal ad hoc committee, or with some of the partners, if you're willing to do a little bit more, to help us develop that strategy on which to start to implement? That's my question for the board.
My answer is yes.
Yes, okay. And we don't have that agendized today, so we'll have to bring that back.
CAO Parker?
Oh, she made the statement I was gonna make about, it's not being agendized, but we at an administration will put together our recommendations and options for the board to consider for on July 9th, with your permission, of course.
That works for me, and that's our next meeting after this one. Any further comments? And I will just say, I don't agree with the recommendation from Supervisor Green. There is a separate avenue and pathway that is working towards better understanding how to bring that to the public. And I think that we need to let that pathway continue. It's not a pathway towards a solution or a pathway towards a response. It's a pathway of figuring out what the federal and state agencies are actually planning to do, and what their needs are, and how it is that we can come together and make that happen. So that is a work in progress, and I would prefer not to deviate that path or complicate that path anymore.
Well, not having any knowledge of that any more than anybody else in this room does, is there any timeline for that to come?
Well, you haven't had a conversation with me, and this is my district, and something I've been working on for a long time and have a lot of conversations with a lot of people in this room. So there are things that you're probably not aware of because of the Brown Act.
Okay. Well, so it sounds like we have a game plan of sorts for the internal stuff. I guess I may be more interested in the external stuff than, I don't want to say I'm more interested, but it sounds like we aren't gonna do an ad hoc to adjust the name change. So my question is, do any of these external recommendations?
And I think that the ad hoc committee can look at both the internal and the external. It shouldn't have to be limited at that point. That gives them the entire recommendations to look into and provide more detailed action plan, strategy, and implementation.
So you're saying the-
Because we can, we can say one of these, but if we, if we don't provide implementation for our staff, then we might just be waiting for something that will never happen. And I did not mean any offense to our staff.
Oh, no. I was gonna ask a clarifying question, if that's okay.
Vague.
So Supervisor Green, what he was proposing was looking to work on the healing outside of the name change, which is outside of the, I mean, it sounds like it's in other hands. And whatever side it comes down on, the healing that I think I'm hearing you speak to is something that the forums, like a forum itself, could, could, regardless of the outcome, right? Is that, you're speaking about the healing of it, and we're also over here saying there is a trajectory and a pathway that is happening that is out of our control? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'll go ahead and take that. In my opinion, what I was hearing was to open up a forum for speaking on the subject matter. And that subject matter is being worked on, meeting with BGN, meeting with the, what do they call it?
Kagan.
Kagan, to figure out, are they coming here to have these conversations? Are we left alone to have these conversations? What exactly are the questions that we need to answer in these conversations? Do they have any funding for these conversations? We're having those conversations right now to better understand their process, and I'll just be blunt, they have no idea what their process is. And so that makes it that much more difficult for us.
You're getting off topic.
Yeah.
And thank you, that really clarifies what I think-
And so I think we just need to move past that at this moment in time. From what I'm hearing, recommendation, July 9th, ad hoc committee, to create an ad hoc committee based on the internal and external recommendations that we have before us from this final report.
Yes.
And I have a consensus, and thank you very much. Really appreciate everyone's time. And even though the conversation aimed for almost one specific thing, I want to thank for the overall dialogue and the overall work that has been done towards ensuring that we are doing better tomorrow than we were yesterday, and ensuring that people have access to us, and people are able to voice their opinions and get the services they need and feel safer, no matter where they are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.